All right, we'll call the meeting to order. This is Brian Waller, Zoning Board of Appeals Chairman. As a preliminary matter, we'll start by confirming that all remote members can hear me.
Katrina.
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
So when we do 16 Elmwood Street, can I do, am I just reading this legal hybrid notice?
Yes.
Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll start by confirming that all remote members can hear me and can be heard. Remote members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Ms. Reed? Ms. Biswas? We'll come back.
Here.
And we do not have Mr. McCusker. Okay, is that better?
Okay, muted.
Okay.
This is Brian instead of Wingrit. Wingrit is my wife.
I don't think she can hear you.
No.
Can you hear me?
We.
We can hear you, Brian. We're taking a roll call of board members right now, so just hold on a minute.
Okay, thanks.
Kay. She's muted. Let me try texting her. She's not getting my texts. She's unmuted now. Kay, can you hear us? Kay?
Have you got her phone number?
Yeah.
How about if we hold a white piece of paper and write on it?
Bill just did that.
Oh, did he?
Yeah.
Step ahead of me.
Can you hear us?
Yeah.
Because you can't hear us at all? You can't hear Brian or anybody? Okay, she's not hearing us. Is the volume set on your, on your computer? All right, unmute you. You're muted on.
Can you hear me?
All right, say, talk to me again off the phone.
All right, is that better?
Okay, I can hear Brian.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right, no problem. Thank you. Good evening. It is 7:09 PM. This open meeting of the Grafton Zoning Board of Appeals is being conducted both remotely and in person, consistent with the Legislative Acts of 2021, Chapter 20, Section 20, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency. This meeting is convened via Zoom video conference and in person, as posted on the meeting agenda, which can be found in the Town of Grafton website. Please see the meeting agenda for details on how to participate remotely. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. All participation within this meeting will be visible to others. Accordingly, please be aware that other people may be able to see you and that you should take care not to screen share your computer. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording of this meeting, and that recording may be published or rebroadcast at a later date. This meeting will feature public comment. To request acknowledgement to speak, for those online, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom. The meeting administrator will enable you to speak when it's your turn. For those on the phone exclusively, the AV staff will assist us to allow you to speak. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be done by a roll call vote. All right, so we have one new case this evening and one that was continued. And a few other 40B cases to discuss. So we'll start with the new case, 16 Elmwood Street. And so we have Brian Salerno. Is there anyone else?
Brian is the owner of the property.
Is he represented or is he presenting?
He's presenting.
Okay. So Mr. Salerno, can you? There you go.
Yes, I'm here.
All right, thank you. Make sure you can hear us. All right, so the way we will proceed this evening is that the clerk will read the petition, and then the petitioner, Mr. Salerno, will have the opportunity to present their case. The petitioner will have 15 minutes to present. The petitioner shall present the required information, and all comments should be specific. The opposition will also have 15 minutes to speak, if there is any. These time limits may be extended with consent of the board. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of or in opposition to the petition will then have an opportunity to do so. Letters received in favor or in opposition of the petition will be read into the meeting record. If you wish to speak, state your name and address for the record. The board may ask questions from time to time. However, all conversation should be directed through the chair. After all the evidence is presented, the board will enter into discussion and render a decision. At any time during this hearing and prior to a decision being made by the board, the petitioner has the option to request that the petition be withdrawn without prejudice or continued until a later date, at which time the petitioner could provide additional information favorable to the petitioner. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Salerno.
You gotta read.
Oh, I'm sorry. First, Ms. Reed to read the petition.
The Grafton Board of Appeals has received a petition from Brian Salerno for 16 Elmwood Street requesting that the Zoning Board of Appeals grant a change of a three-family apartment building into a four-family apartment building on a pre-existing non-conforming building. The board will conduct a public hearing on December 15, 2022, at 7:00 PM in Conference Room 8 at the Municipal Center, 30 Providence Road, Grafton, to consider this request and/or take whatever action is necessary, including the granting of a finding, special permit, variance, or other necessary relief allowed under the zoning bylaw. Any person wishing to be heard in conjunction with this request should appear at the time and place designated by the letter or by letter to this board in time to be read at the hearing. Copies of this application and plan are available for public inspection on the Town of Grafton website and on the Zoning Board of Appeals 40A page. This meeting will be a hybrid meeting conducted in person and remotely. The Zoning Board of Appeals members, Brian Waller, Chair Kay Reed, Clerk Bill Yeomans, Will McCusker, Peter Adams, and Metalli Biswas. Case number ZB 890.
All right, thank you. Now, Attorney.
All right.
Please proceed. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm presenting the petition for a change of use from the three families to a four family. And the second floor of this three family, it's only half of the footprint of the whole foundation, so we are not changing the foundation anyhow. We are just, the proposal is just to extend the second floor to meet the same footprint of the first floor, and therefore allowing us to build the second unit. So currently, it's two units on the first floor and one unit on the second floor. And there is plenty of space for parking lot. There is a sewer to the property, so it's just extending the second floor to build the second apartment. And it would be conforming with all the other three apartments. They're all going to be the same, same, same sizes. And within my proposals, I do understand that I would need to install a fire alarm system, so we will install the fire alarm and also the sprinkler system.
Mr. Berger, do you want to take us through your?
I can. So what we have is he's extending a pre-existing non-conforming use. He's not, he's not changing it, but I think that's just a technicality. Under your special permit, you do have the right to ask for a site plan, and we've talked about this in the past with, with other cases. Within a multifamily unit, you need to have 2.25 spaces for parking. So under the site plan, I would think this applicant would need to provide you something, either a certified plot plan showing where this parking is going to be. Other than, you know, I don't want to discuss the, the building code of what he's proposing to build, because that's after the fact. All we're discussing in front of this board is the use of the building. And, and Brian is aware that he has to upgrade all the life safety components. So those, those are my concerns with, with this proposal.
Okay. Any comments from the board?
Do I need to be assigned or appointed a voting member in this case?
Thank you, Metalli. Yeah, so we will appoint Metalli Biswas as a voting member for case number 890.
Thanks.
Thank you. Did you have a question, Metalli, besides that?
Uh, no, that was just.
I have a question.
Thank you for pointing that out. Mr. Yeomans.
Yeah, yes, Mr., I would like to better understand the history of the apartments in this, in this house, as far as ownership. When did you take possession of it? Has it something, is it a house that you've owned for some period of time?
No, I purchased the property last year.
The, the, the history of ownership of this.
Sure. So I purchased the, the property last year, this year, actually, no, 2022. I purchased the property this year, and the owner of the property, he was selling the, the whole property vacant, so he moved out once I purchased the property, and he wasn't currently renting the other apartments. And since I owned the property, I was in the process of getting their architectural plans and then finally submit it for, for the zoning.
So you've just recently, this year, taken ownership of the property?
Correct, this year, yes. About six months ago. Six, two weeks ago.
Have you had any equity in the property in prior years?
No, no.
Any family connection to the property?
No.
The point, if I may.
Please.
The point that Mr. Berger made, I'm familiar with this property. I've driven into it, and, you know, I think a, a site plan for the property is something that, you know, I know I would like to see. I think it's in a, it's in a watershed. I don't know specifically. Mr. Berger, do you know if it's in the watershed protection?
It is.
I will tell you momentarily. I, I did give a, right there.
I think it said it was.
It is, it is. It's in the water protection overlay district.
I know that it has some blacktop as you pull into the property, and I drove in there, you know, a few weeks back and just turned around and, and came out. It, it, it appears now to be unoccupied.
Correct.
And it has been, it has had that appearance for, you know, quite a few months. I mean, actually.
He bought it, he bought it vacant six days ago.
He bought it vacant, okay. I think that the, there is blacktop there, but it's in very, very poor condition. And to go from a three-unit apartment to four units, I'd like to better understand what the footprint is going to be, where you're going to have blacktop, where you're going to have parking. Is there any requirement? Because I know there are requirements when you take it above three units relative to the sprinklers and things like that. I don't know if there's any necessity or requirement for handicap parking. And so these are questions, you know, that I have. Perhaps, Mr. Berger, do you know if, if there is a requirement for handicap parking with four units?
I, I don't think there is. I will look into that when he applies for his building permit or when he provides you a site plan. Because you remember, you know, he needs 2.25 spaces, so you need two, four, six, eight. You need, you need 10 spaces there. So he's going to show you where those 10 spaces are going. That's part of the site plan.
And if you see the, the certified plot plan, the, the land is very extended to the back, so the plan was to add as many parking spaces as we need.
Right, but the, but what, what we're saying now, and Mr. Chair, may I?
Uh, please.
So what we're saying is you're in the, and you have plenty of land here, but you still need to perform this exercise. You need to have your, your cert, you need to have your land surveyor come in and do a site plan on this to show your 10 spaces or whatever spaces that you need. You also need to show us how much impervious versus pervious, because 75% of, of this land, let's just say, for layman's term, must stay green to absorb the water, to, to re, recharge the aquifer. So right now, you do not have 10 spaces. I'm pretty sure you're going to be able to get the 10 spaces, but you need to show that to this board if they're requesting a site plan.
Could that, could something like this be a condition for permitting or no?
Well, that's, that's, that's this board. I can answer that.
Yeah, because that, that can be easily done. I'll, I'll have the surveyor complete whatever site plan we need. If that could be a condition, that would be great.
I think it's my opinion that it would be better to see the site plan before we vote. I understand the applicant's position of having it be a condition, but I'd be interested to hear other board members' thoughts on that point.
Ms. Reed?
Um, yes, so, Mr. Salerno, were, were you told in advance that, that you needed 2.25 spaces for this property if we were going to grant you this permit to make this a four-family? You didn't, you weren't aware of that? Okay.
No, I have, I have many meetings with the building inspector, and this is the first that I'm hearing about the site plan. That's why I'm mentioning, if it could be a condition, that way it wouldn't take more time. That's the reason. But this is the first time that I'm hearing this.
So the site plan, something that we can say that we would like to see, just to make sure that we're clear, right?
Sure, sure, of course.
Sure. So, and I, I agree that I feel like this is important for us to have this laid out as well. So I agree that, also that I think a site plan would be important to see where the parking is going to go, pervious versus impervious, as well as Mr. Berger said. So I agree with that as well.
When's our next meeting?
We don't have one picked yet.
Oh, we don't?
No.
Do we have any other new cases?
No, but we've got that one issue that we'll probably have to hear in January, so we're going to have a hearing in January.
So why don't we go ahead and pick a date? Do you, Mr. Salerno, do you know how long it would take you to have the site plan and mapped out the spaces?
I will contact my surveyor tomorrow, and I'll try to expedite it as quick as we can.
Because we could schedule a, a meeting for, I don't know, mid-January?
Sure, yeah, let's, let's do that.
Say, uh.
I can definitely get anything by then, yeah.
January 12?
Either the 12th or the 19th.
12, that's fine, yeah. If that works for everyone, that's fine.
Because that other one will probably have to be the 12th, which I could, 12th, the 5th. The 12th, the 5th.
28.
Eight, yeah. It would give me enough time to, to do the legal. Yeah, the 12th would work. Any earlier would be tough, but the 12th would work, because you've got the closing dates of the newspapers for the holidays.
You've got to have a plan before you're going to advertise it, so.
Not about this one, something else. This one will just continue. I'm talking about.
Oh, another one?
Something else in my head that we're going to have to do, so the 12th would work.
Okay. I have a question for Bob. Bob, you, it just got brought up, and I should know this from Providence Road Commons, but a three-unit doesn't have to be sprinkled, but a four-unit has to be sprinkled?
No, no, three-unit has to be sprinkled if you are building new.
A three-unit, oh, so no, if he does nothing right now, he doesn't have to sprinkle it. If he continues with his plan, he has to sprinkle it.
You know, that's the, you know, that's a tough question. And he, this developer is doing one high street right now also. He's taking a, a four-family and redoing the four-family.
Yeah.
Because it's under the existing building code.
Yeah.
And he has some other things he did, he doesn't have to sprinkle that building. But because this building, he's changing something, now he's going to have to sprinkle this building.
Right.
It all depends on what you do inside on the existing building code.
And you know that, Brian, correct?
Yes, I understand, I understand. And the plan was always, if I, I'm granted to do the four-family, I'll have to sprinkle. If not, I'll, I'll just remodel the unit, so I don't have to.
So can I ask a question? Why, so you're remodeling the second floor, you said, to add this unit?
Correct.
What, it, from the way you explained it, it sounded like it was just open but unfinished. Is that what it?
No, no, it's not open. I had to extend the second floor to meet the same footprint of the first floor.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so I'm trying to find it right now for you, Brian.
Yeah, it was an addition that was.
Oh, I see.
So it was that, that corner was kind of flat.
Correct.
Yeah.
So here's the picture. So see right here?
Yeah.
So what he's doing is he's taking this right here, where it's flat here, and he's bumping out and squaring it off and adding a unit there. It's easier to.
Yeah, the unit's going to be divided within the second floor, but yes, that's what I'm doing.
Mr. Yeomans?
Yeah, I, I concur with earlier comments of board members. You know, I, before I vote on this, I want to see an engineered plan that shows where you're going to have the parking, that shows the amount of blacktop, you're going to have impervious versus pervious surface, and that would be something that I would vote on. I'm not in concurrence to make this a condition for approving this tonight.
I just want to, can you, Katrina, can you go back to the, the lot plan? I'm not sure, you had it up?
Yeah.
I want to say it was 97%?
Oh, right now?
Pervious, yeah. 90, 94%, right?
Impervious coverage. So right now.
Oh, we'd have to do the math.
Yeah.
Oh, so 88% is.
Right, open space.
Yeah, they've only got 11% covered.
So they would have to pay the big chunk of the back to.
Right, too.
Even approach that.
Is there a 50% rule though?
70.
They can go up to 50%. I believe Bob can clarify that, the maximum they could do. The, it's 50% or 5,000 square feet. They could go up to 75%, but it's.
No, 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 he's talking about something else.
Oh, okay.
I'm bringing the bylaw up right now.
The, I think in the, in, in this, the water protection overlay, you can only.
I'm going to take the screen. I have it right here, Pete.
Yeah.
Can somebody let me take the screen?
Oh, I got to give you permission, hold on.
Brian, when you have, when you contact your land surveyor, have him give me a call.
Okay, I'll do that.
Here we go.
Go ahead.
Let's go to screen, we're going to go to screen number one, people. Oops, I got to move you guys. Okay, pre-existing non-conforming structures or uses, we're not going to go through it because we all know. Now, we go into here, notwithstanding, however, in the water protection, water supply protection overlay district, an extension alteration or change may only be allowed by the Zoning Board of Appeals up to 50% above what was existing on the site as of the date of the water supply protection overlay district. So with the addition, we're good, because he's going over that, he's going over that addition that was there years ago, there was only one story. But what we have with that 50% is the ground cover. So we've got to make sure that we stay within that 50% to get the parking, because that's all that's talking about right now on this situation is just the parking or the pavement.
I mean, I, I just would be.
Because putting a roof over the addition doesn't give you any more of that percentage.
Right.
But I think it would be hard to get to 50%. I mean, I don't think there's any risk of.
I don't think so either, but just something to, for the engineer to consider. He's got to exactly measure that existing, is that existing driveway paved?
Brian.
I don't know where Brian is, but I, I thought it was.
It is, it is.
It is, okay.
You've got to remember, 75% has to stay green, and they've got 88% right now, so you just have a little bit you're playing with.
Yeah.
If I'm reading that right. So I, I would, you know, as the zoning enforcement officer, I would, I would want to make sure that they meet that criteria, because if they don't, then we're going to have a problem.
So.
But if I understood correctly, we can go up to 50%, you said?
No, you can only go 50% of what you have now.
Oh, I see.
So I guess what, I don't understand why the parking issue is just coming up for the first time.
Well, you know, when, when we give, when we have a developer come in, the developer should have all of, all the details on, on a site plan. He provided a site plan, but he didn't provide what he was doing to the site plan, other than he gave us a great set of plans. all the details on, on a site plan. He provided a site plan, but he didn't provide what he was doing to the site plan, other than he gave us a great set of plans.
But, I mean, that doesn't have to come before the board before.
It does when, when you're, when you're taking a three and you're turning it into a four, because now your regulations are, are getting thrown in there right now.
No, no, no. I'm saying that has to come before the board, but I'm saying, I mean, I think he could have been told ahead of time to.
Get the site plan with the parking.
Yeah.
I didn't, I didn't know, or I could have told him.
But if I may.
Please.
The developer has a certain responsibility to discover and outline all of the facts regarding the property. And a site plan by a, by an engineer would certainly understand the requirement of two-point-two-five spaces per apartment and would act accordingly. So, uh, the plan that has been provided, uh, you know, does not have any site plan for parking. And the point that Mr. Berger has made, uh, would generally be known by an engineer who was doing a site plan for a developer. So while that may not have been communicated or heard that, uh, on the part of the developer, Mr. Salerno, you have the responsibility to show to the board, uh, specifically on this lot, that it will not go above the increase as been outlined by Mr. Berger. So that's what we need, uh, an engineered plan stamped, uh, for a site plan for parking that's going to show the amount of increase to accommodate the two-point-two-five, uh, spaces per apartment and versus what is there now. And I've driven in there and it, you know, I think it's, it's hard to see what is there now as far as blacktop. It seems to be in very poor condition. So, you know, I'd like to see something more definitive that shows that existing blacktop. And then how much are you gonna increase it to get these two-point-two-five spaces per apartment? And your engineered plan would show that. When you look at the numbers here, the total square feet is forty-two sixty-eight. That's impervious. Fifty percent of that is twenty-one something, which is a little over, what, forty by fifty? So they don't have a heck of a lot to play with.
But if that, if that's already.
That's, 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 that's every driveway, walkway, steps, and the house. They've added it all up right here.
Right. So they only, they can go basically another that size, right?
So, yeah, yeah, I don't have a scale, but they, they probably can make it. They, they probably can make it.
All right, so, um.
You could always do tandem on same units.
They what?
You could do tandem. Like if it's like unit one, it's tandem. Unit two, it's tandem parking if they had to.
All right, so, um, so we're gonna schedule our next meeting for January 12th at seven PM. So, Mr. Salerno, would you like to continue this to that meeting? Um, before we vote and you can have that, um, have that engineered plan.
Okay. Can I just ask one more question before we continue the matter?
Yes, uh, sorry, I didn't see your hand.
And there's also a question from a neighbor.
Um, Bob, I just wanted to ask with special permits, um, does one point five-point-five, the conditions for granting special permits apply? And if so, I would also ask that in this continuance period, if, um, Mr. Salerno wouldn't mind kind of going through those conditions and just explaining to the board whether those apply, how we can kind of contemplate those, or how he thinks we should contemplate those conditions in connection with the project.
And, and just so the board understands, the question is one-point-five is the criteria for the planning board or appointing authority to issue a special permit, which does incorporate, um, which does incorporate the site plan, uh, deep into it. And yes, they, you could ask for a full-blown site plan.
Sorry. Well, I guess my question, I mean, if it's applicable to the planning board, that's separate.
No.
For.
We got, we've got, um, confirmation, and I'm, I'm going through it now. We got confirmation from town, from the town, um, attorney. That you, you, you can act on, on that because it's also, it says, except as provided in three-four-three-five. And three-four-three-five is your special permit that brings the zoning board of appeals into play. But in, in here, I'll share my screen. This is the special permit granting authority. Uh, can you see my screen?
Yes, thank you. This is exactly what I was looking at. Yep.
Yeah, so in, in here, um, the planning board is, is the, um, appointing authority or the granting authority. But it also brings you in here too, under three-four-three-five. And then it goes down with, you know, the fees, but what really we were talking about, you could go into here if you wanted to. And I think that's where you were leaning towards answering these questions.
Yes, just to sort of better understand how the site point, how the project, yeah, just to better understand the project.
Yep, you could. And that brings in, that brings in the site plan. So I will talk to, um, I'll talk to the applicant offline. Uh, maybe tomorrow if he calls, and I can, I can go over this with him. If the chair wants to, um, you know, go through this exercise.
Yeah, I mean, if, if the applicant is, um, asking to continue to January 12th, we'll do that.
Yeah.
Okay. So I believe there's a comment from a.
Yeah, there's a comment from one neighbor, um, Tricia. Um, will we be able to dispute this as neighbors, meaning the parking? Cause I do not want ten parking spots next to my house.
Was that just typed in the chat?
Yes.
What is her address?
Tricia, can you type in what your address is and where you are in reference to Brian's property? She's at twenty-two Elmwood.
Okay.
Thank you.
Need that for the record, right?
Yep. And what is your last name, Tricia? Thank you.
Is she still there? I mean, what's her op- opinion of next, next to her property?
Well, this is sixteen, so twenty-two is.
No, I know it's, but there's no way not to be, I mean, he's not gonna, I doubt they're gonna put it in the setback, so.
It's probably gonna be right where it is now. She's gonna extend further to the back of the house.
But I'm just curious what her, her opinion is of ne- she said next to my property.
So we, we can hear further public comment in January as well?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Until we close it, yeah.
So Tricia, you're welcome to appear at the, uh, January 12th continuation of this.
Or if we get, when we get the site plan online, um, you can take a look at it online too, when I get it, and I, cause I'll upload it to the webpage.
Do we need to?
There is, oh, these are her questions. So there is no pri-.
Yeah.
There is no privacy fence, and we have about ten feet from their driveway to ours.
Say that again.
She says there is no privacy fence, and they have about ten feet from where their driveway is to ours.
Wow, it doesn't show it on this.
Well, it doesn't show her driveway.
Yeah.
I mean, it's way back within his setback.
No, we, we have time to go down there before the next meeting, take a, a look.
Yeah.
If I'm looking at Google Earth only, it looks like twenty-two is further away from, is on the other side of sixteen Elmwood. Um, I just wanna make sure that the comment is with respect to sixteen Elmwood and not the twenty-four, twenty-six Elmwood.
No, she's right next. I'm looking at the, the site plan, Metalli. If you're standing, if you're standing in the front of sixteen Elmwood, she is the house to the left. Cause I have the site plan and her name is on the site plan. To the right is, um, twelve Elmwood, Les Bronze. To the left is Moulton at twenty-two.
Ri- right. Um, and so is the, oh, maybe I'm looking at the walkway and the, okay, I, I see, I see it on. Yep, okay, never mind. I'm on the same page.
That's okay.
Okay, so at this time, any, any further comment online? So at this time, I entertain a motion to continue case number eight-ninety to January 12th at seven PM.
So move. Second.
Motion made and seconded, uh, do roll call vote. Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Yeoman?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Bizwas?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes. Uh, case is continued to January 12th at seven PM. Okay, um, so Mr. Salerno, Mr. Berger, or you can be in touch with, uh, Mr. Berger.
Okay, sounds good.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Have a good night.
January twelfth? January twelfth at seven PM.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, so next on the agenda is the continuation of ninety-five Wesson Street.
Yeah, that was just a withdrawal without prejudice. Remember, she had withdrawn it, then withdrawn her withdrawal, and now it is to withdraw without prejudice.
Okay. So no action needed, right?
No, you just need to accept her withdrawal and take a vote on it and close it out. Make a motion.
Entertain a motion to, um, accept the withdrawal without prejudice of case number eight-eighty-nine ninety-five Wesson Street.
So move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, uh, Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Yeoman?
Yes.
And, oh, appoint Ms. Bizwas as a, uh, voting member. I guess for everything this evening.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Bizwas?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes. Uh, so case number eight-eighty-nine is withdrawn. So next on the agenda is Craftsman Court.
Yep, soon as I can find it.
Hello?
So this has been ongoing a couple of meetings. Um, so Tier originally submitted his stuff. Jeff did send us a letter, but then there were questions regarding what you had, the pipes and locations of the propane tanks, which we got that new plan in and submitted. So we did have all of that. So this is, so we can close it out so he can get his soil erosion bond, um, returned to him. He does still have a bond open with conservation, um, that they did give him the information. So he's gotta apply to go before conservation to get that bond released, which is on the order of conditions. So that's where it stands right now. I think that's everything, right? So Tier?
Yes.
Okay.
Those are separate and distinct.
Yes, so he had it under the order of conditions, had a soil erosion and control maintenance bond through conservation. So he's gotta go before them and get on their agenda to have that bond released, but that is completely separate to us.
Okay, so.
And there was a couple of other just cleanup items that we included. We provided the, the final ASBIL that's been signed off by our engineer. There was a couple of signs that were requested that were installed, and we included pictures of that. And there was some limited, um, some areas where, uh, Mr. Walsh had requested, uh, just mulch to, to better retain areas, and we had communicated with him and pictures have been provided. So ideally, we're, we're kind of looking to close the overall process with, uh, with ZBA, accept the ASBIL. Um, and just for us to kind of recognize that, uh, that the site is complete, um, as it relates to, um, uh, to the town and the comprehensive permit as it was issued.
So is it a certificate of completion?
No, this is something completely different, because this does not get taken over by the town. This is a condo association. So he has an association. Basically, we just have to say everything's been done to the permit, um, and be able to release his bond. I think that's all we do, right, so Tier? Cause that's what we did over on, on Flint Pond. Yeah. There's nothing else we have to really do on this.
But I think you did, I think you did, um, on Flint Pond, give a certificate of completion.
Yeah, there was one that I had.
That's the first one we did.
Yeah, I had, I had to create it, which I have it somewhere, so I can find that and create one for, so Tier, on this one.
Providence Road Commons must have one too.
Well, they haven't come before us yet. That one's still open.
It's still open?
That's still open.
Did Jeff give us a letter saying all the stuff they just mentioned is, 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 is complete?
I don't know if I've gotten one from him, but he has reviewed everything and he said everything is fine. So, this is, we've been going back and forth on this since June. Yes, I do have a letter from him dated September fifteenth, that everything is fine. And we, which we had during our September meeting, but the question was that Bill had was about the propane tanks, um.
Identifying them.
Identifying them, which we did get. I do have that plan, which we have, so.
And the sign and.
So the signs are up. Um, I thought I made these for you guys. I may not have.
Some rubbish or something? Jeff okayed all that stuff too?
So the sign for Craftsman Court was this. I can pull them up on the screen from the email. So that sign had to be posted. The handicap sign had to be posted. Um, and then there was some erosion control, so they just added mulch in different locations for that. So everything's been done per Jeff's letter for everything.
Okay.
And it's just, um, right now, just to release the, um.
I like backup letters, so.
I do have one. Yeah, no, 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 no. I have everything here.
I like the final one saying everything, it's okay.
Yep. Nope, everything's here. Everything's checked off and everything's fine, so.
All right, so then, once we take a vote, you can then, whatever they need, whether it be a letter or.
Right, and we can, and we can, um, release the fourteen thousand dollars that we're holding on a bond for him.
So at this time, I entertain a motion to, um, I guess, consider the forty-B project for Craftsman Court. I don't have that case number.
I don't either.
Katrina, not to contradict what you just said, but fourteen thousand is the amount that was paid for Prentice Place. You might wanna double-check and make sure um, that is not the same one for.
I'm looking at the bond. It says Craftsman Court. It's dated January thirteenth, twenty-seventeen. Soil erosion and sediment control maintenance performance bond, fourteen thousand dollars.
How, how long ago was that?
January thirteenth of twenty-seventeen.
Wow.
Six years.
I'm forgetting.
I'm reading out the bond.
Might be a windfall.
And then you have a tw- the, the, um, conservation is twenty-five thousand.
Hey.
Getting better and better.
That's right.
You like my answers tonight, right?
Does the planning board have any money for us?
I don't think so, but, um, hold on. I can get you this case number if you just bear with me one sec. Um, hold on, I can get you this case number if you just bear with me one sec.
Sorry.
Mister Chair.
Uh, Mr. Berger.
Are you, um, thinking about having a motion, um, to sign this certificate of completion?
I wasn't.
Because sortier isn't, or or, um, is, Mark, is that what you're looking for too?
Yeah, I think that's what we're, I think that kind of closes the loop and kind of closes the file on the on the project. I think that's what we're looking, I didn't know if you uh, I wasn't aware that you issue a certificate. I, um, if you do, then we would respectfully request one. Um, as it relates to the zoning board, obviously, we need to do a certificate of compliance uh, for the notice of intent, and in conjunction with that, we'd request the board, uh, the bond release from them. So we have our engineer preparing that documentation now, um, but I don't think that impacts, um, uh, the zoning board or the the comprehensive permit where that's a a a specific approval via Conservation. Um, so I guess we would request a certificate of completion if if that's standard procedure with the town.
Well, I I think what we determined was there wasn't, because it's a private roadway.
No, we, Mister Chair, we we have been issuing those for the privates.
We have been, but it doesn't have to go through the whole, um, determination of completeness like a development does.
Town meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's.
So it's either, okay.
And it's case number seven sixty-two.
Yes, we're not requesting that the town take over the, um, uh, maintenance of the roadway or anything, so. Yeah, it's remaining private per the per the permit.
Well, right, so I I guess what I was saying was the the form of that notice or whatever you need. You know, we can provide that based on a a vote that the project's complete. You know, it's it's just you know, we can call it whatever you need it called or whatever our process entails. Mister Yeoman.
Uh, this, this came before us, I think in September, was it?
Yeah.
And and we found a few things that needed to be addressed.
Yes.
And those items have been addressed. The signage and the location of the tanks more clearly defined.
Yes.
And those conditions have been met and they're satisfactory, so therefore, you know, we can go forward with the approval, that's, uh, whatever is necessary.
Yep.
Right, that's, I I think we're all on the same page with that, so. At this time, I entertain a motion to close and confirm completion of case number seven sixty-two Craftsman Court.
So move. Second.
Motion made and seconded, Ms. Reed.
Yes.
Mister Yeoman.
Yes.
Mister Adams.
Yes.
Ms. Bizwas.
Yes.
Chairman votes yes. Uh, Craftsman Court is, the motion's passed, Craftsman Court is complete, the bond can be released. And we'll give you whatever form you need.
Yep, I'll type that up. I have one. I have a plan. So Tier, I'll do that on Monday, okay?
Terrific. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, everybody. I appreciate all your support.
Good night.
Okay, have a happy holiday.
You as well.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, so. Uh, next on the agenda is Fisherville Terrace. Attorney Agostino, do you want to, uh? So I I believe what you're requesting is that we determine that the change from basically that this um, proposed change to the sorry, lost the the word for it, um. To the wastewater, not wastewater.
Drainage pipe.
Drainage pipe, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, is not a material change, correct?
Um, yes, Mister Chairman, just for the record, Christopher Agostino, counsel for Fisherville Terrace LLC. I'm here this evening uh, with Munir Ahmed, who's the principal of the development. Um, you're correct, what you have before you is, uh, what's referred to under the forty B regulations as a notice of project change. Um, we submitted it at the request of Mister Berger, uh, following, um, uh, changes that were necessitated to the Main Street drainage improvements that were called for uh, in connection with this comprehensive permit, uh, without rehashing the whole history, if the board recalls. Uh, the comprehensive permit required that the applicant uh, complete certain improvements to the Main Street drainage infrastructure, and there was a plan that was attached to the original approval that was referred to as the Main Street Drainage Plan. And that plan depicted certain configuration of pipes within Main Street. And the condition required that that work be completed concurrent with Mass DOT's improvements to the Main Street drainage infrastructure, uh, and Main Street generally, which is still ongoing. Um, uh, when Mass DOT went to open up the street uh, because of, uh, subsurface soil conditions and ledge that they encountered. Um, unbeknownst to Fisherville, although their plans uh, had shown, uh, a configuration including a pipe of adequate size uh, that would have accommodated the stormwater runoff from the Fisherville Terrace Development. Um, unbeknownst to Fisherville, DOT's contractor installed a pipe that was too small. Um, so, uh, Fisherville, uh, in conjunction with, um, Graves Engineering and and, uh, Fisherville's engineer Steve O'Connell, um, undertook to redesign uh, the drainage infrastructure for not only Main Street, but also for Fisherville Terrace, because our drainage infrastructure uh, ties in and and pours down the hill into that drainage infrastructure, so. Um, we completed those plans to modify the Main Street, uh, drainage structure. Um, unfortunately, it took longer than we had hoped. Um, there were some delays for a variety of reasons. Um, uh, one of which is that Mass DOT's stormwater management calculations or stormwater drainage calculations um, made some incorrect assumptions that we were forced to do more uh, research and modification of our drainage plan than initially anticipated. Um, it's also the case that our engineer, um, uh, the lead designer on the project, Steve O'Connell, it had some personal health issues as well, which slowed us down, um, and we apologize that it took longer than we had hoped, but, um, we did ultimately produce a revised drainage plan that, uh, with accompanying, uh, drainage calculations that show that our proposed revisions to the Main Street drainage infrastructure uh, will be sufficient to accommodate all of the stormwater runoff from our development site. Um, we had submitted those plans and the drainage calculations to Graves Engineering. Um, we had thought that they were under review and anticipated that, um, pursuant to the the permit. Uh, it would be subject to administrative approval, which is a defined term under the permit, which would anticipate that that Jeff would produce a peer review report. And if the engineering checked out per the peer review, um, we had expected that, uh, we would have satisfied the administrative approval and then perhaps it would have been, uh, approved by the zoning board at a business meeting, uh, if if they were so inclined. Uh, but given the goings on over this past summer, um, with some of the drainage issues, I guess it was determined that, uh, the board would want an update on, uh, the drainage plan. Um, so Mister Berger asked us to present to the board as a notice of project change to alert the board to the fact that we were reconfiguring the drainage infrastructure within Main Street. Um, still, again, concurrently with the Main Street, uh, improvements, which are not slated to be completed until the spring, so, uh, at this point, we're still waiting on uh, the report from Jeff Walsh, which is a technical peer review of our revised drainage proposal. Um, again, all of this is, uh, subsurface. It's it's, uh, infrastructure, drainage infrastructure that, um, does not implicate any site redesign. Uh, you know, any change in the overall layout and previous area, none of that. Um, this is all technical, uh, stormwater management design within Main Street um, to address the fact that the Mass DOT put in an undersized pipe, um.
Sorry.
It's okay, um.
I'm mute, I'm sorry.
You're not muted.
No, that's all right. Um, so, uh, we have the, uh, we have our calculations in front of this this board. Um, it's been indicated to us that the board, uh, would determine that this is a substantial change. Um, again, the forty B regulations have a procedure um, and standards by which the board is supposed to consider whether a change is substantial or insubstantial. I think my my sense is that this is just kind of, uh, gained a certain amount of momentum that, um, you know, it's been indicated to us that the board wants to, uh, have a public hearing on this. So we're inclined to follow the board's lead, follow Mister Berger's lead. Um, we really wanna continue to have the board's support and connection with this project. Um, you know, we had some drainage issues earlier this year, um, you know, a combination of factors that led to some runoff that was cleaned up and and, uh, remediated. Um, we also worked with the Conservation Commission, uh, to clean up some silt that, uh, had run off, and we got compliance and sign off from them as well. So, you know, we're here tonight, um, the, again, request of of Mister Berger and and Dan Hillit indicated that, um, you know, the board would like to see this request. And the the board's, uh, charged tonight is to determine whether or not, uh, the 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 infrastructure train changes, the changes to the technical uh, stormwater management design within Main Street, um, is a substantial change or insubstantial change. Um, if you determine it is a substantial change, then the regulations provide that, uh, we hold a public hearing on the matter um, with notice and, uh, notice to a butters and publication of notice, uh, according to the public hearing requirements of the open meeting law and whatnot. Um, if the board determines that it's an insubstantial change, then the change is um, or the requested change is approved as requested. Um, in this case, since it's an engineering issue, uh, it really, you know, would be subject to engineering peer review anyway. We can't just, you know, we can't do anything that doesn't work from an engineering perspective, and we're not going to. Um, so wh- this is still all subject to, uh, Jeff Walsh's peer review. Um, so i- it's, uh, entirely up to the board, um, and again, if if you wanna hold a public hearing on it, uh, we're willing to obviously follow that lead. I think at this point, Jeff hasn't, you know, to be clear, um, we had thought Jeff was gonna complete his review, uh, a while back, but for whatever reason, it was it was put on hold. Uh, so we don't have the peer review at this point, so the board really doesn't have anything from a, from a technical guidance perspective, uh, to guide its hand as to substantial or insubstantial. Um, so I guess our anticipation is if the board's inclined just to determine that it's substantial and hold a public hearing, then hopefully we would have that information, uh, before the scheduled public hearing. You know, I heard some, uh, talk earlier that, uh, the board is planning to schedule it for, uh, January twelfth. Um, so, you know, we would anticipate that we would have a peer review by then. We anticipate it will confirm that the, uh, proposed alterations to the drainage plan, uh, work from an engineering perspective which would obviously, uh, require a finding at that point that the change, although substantial, uh, would be allowed, um, to go forward, so. Uh, that's the lay of the land. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions the board might have. Um, again, we're we're happy to, uh, follow the board's lead on this and Mister Berger's lead and and whatever we can do to uh, alleviate concerns about, uh, stormwater management on the site. Um, if the board were inclined to determine that uh, given the forty B regulations and what constitutes a substantial change or insubstantial change, that this is insubstantial, um, clearly it would still be subject to Jeff Walsh's review, which if it was received and Jeff had, uh, technical concerns from an engineering perspective, those would need to be addressed regardless. Uh, but if Jeff did determine that the altered plan for the Main Street drainage infrastructure, again, this is all subsurface infrastructure. Um, if he did determine that the engineering that we provided is is, uh, accurate and and, uh, complies with, you know, requirements for stormwater management, uh, then at that point, we would just go forward and essentially that would constitute the administrative approval that's referenced in, uh, the board's comprehensive permit. So happy to answer any questions on on the process, um, you know, what's happened in the past, um, you know, several months. Uh, but that's the charge for the board tonight, and, um, you know, we're we're happy to do whatever we can to get the board's, uh, support or continued support with this development.
So. I mean, that, as you guessing are aware, the, um, the drainage here was, I think, the biggest issue, um, and there was quite a bit of, um, public comment on it prior to approval. You know, the this I think has a pretty large impact. Um, potentially, obviously, we don't know yet from, uh, Jeff Graves, or sorry, Jeff Walsh. But I don't, I don't know that anything, um, related to the drainage here is, you know, by default, insubstantial. Any, any comment from the board?
I have a question. I- is this the layout it always went towards Elmwood Street?
Yeah.
Across the, uh, um, fire station parking lot. It didn't just go up Main Street? All the way?
Originally?
I'm talking two thousand and ten.
Right, cause that's when I first started. This was my first hearing.
Yeah.
And originally, yeah, cause it was supposed to go across Elmwood, down by the fire station and fix the drainage back behind the elementary school where it pooled all the time.
So when did it get changed to?
I think with the Main Street project, because they re- because the elementary school redid the parking lot and the drainage over there quite a few years ago, so I think that alleviated a lot of it. I can't be a hundred percent sure.
I mean, is this new?
You would have to ask.
Is is.
Yeah, if I if I may answer that, so the only change was the size of the pipe that DOT laid in the street, the path and the layout or the overall design was always the same.
That, I'm talking about the path, yes, the path.
Correct. The path is always the same. Um, the changes that were implicated that are before the board um, is that the DOT's contractor encountered ledge. So, uh, the original plan called for a thirty-six inch pipe.
Right.
Um, the DOT's plan that they told us they were going to build identified a twenty-four inch pipe, which we had determined that a twenty-four inch pipe at a particular, um, slope grade, um, we had determined was okay, but then when they encountered ledge, they put an eighteen inch pipe in. Okay, and we we. in. Okay? And we, we discovered that after the pipe was in the ground. Anyway, whatever it is, the entire layout as you see it, or, or the track as you see it, is the same. But it's, it's the size of the pipe that was, was problematic for us.
Do we still have 2010 plans?
Mm-hmm. I have everything in the office.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm just curious, but I mean, if this is, if this is the same path, then all the neighbors knew about this in 2010. So the only change right now is we're going from 36 down to 30. And to be honest with you, and I might take some flak because I know a lot of people down there, if Graves approves the numbers and approves, says a 30 is all right, I don't think it, myself, I don't think it's a substantial change. It's, it's a six-inch difference in the pipe. My, my problem with opening up a hearing, and anybody can come to any meeting. They can come to the next meeting that we have when we have Graves' report. And Brian will get a million questions about tree cutting back when it started and he'll get questions about everything except the size of the pipe. And if we want to go through that, that's fine. And they can do that anyways.
Right.
But I just, I don't, I, I'm not convinced it's substantial if Graves says it's okay.
We, we just don't know. We haven't gotten anything from Jeff.
Yeah, I, I. Correct, correct. If he says it should be a 36, then.
So Mr. Yelman?
Yeah, and, sorry, if I may, if, if Jeff Walsh did find that the pipe size is wrong or that we can't put in a 36 or if there's anything wrong with the engineering, and he says that you guys can't build the, the project as it's approved that would implicate, and again, the regulations point to the number of units, the amount of impervious area, the rental versus for sale, apartments versus townhouses or single-family homes. That's what the regulations speak to as far as substantial and substantial. You know, I'm sure, you know, the board has experience with 40Bs and whatnot. Generally, these types of technical engineering issues are, are left to the engineers. And if there's a dispute or something that implicates the, the overall design of the project, that's when it would come before the board and, and, you know, as a volunteer board, it's obviously valuable time at these hearings.
So I, I think our challenge is we have to decide this within 20 days, correct?
No. We've opened it within 20 days of the request. They sent us.
No, no. So I, I, I'm sorry, and I, I didn't want to correct. The, the board is required to determine substantial or insubstantial within 20 days. That determination needs to be made. If the board's inclined to have a public hearing, we will participate in the public hearing. We, we don't want to, you know, I'd say delay this and, and wait for Jeff only to have the determination and then advertise at a, at a later date. Again, if the board determined, I mean, the board could make a determination that, you know, so long as Jeff confirms the review, it's insubstantial. You could make, you could craft it in that way, you know, make it subject to. But the, the decision needs to be, and again, as a practical matter, you know, i- if you make the determination that it's substantial, we'll, we'll participate. But I understand the concern about, you know, potentially opening it up to everything but the actual singular issue, which is the, the technical engineering aspect of it.
So could we, or could you consent to delaying this decision or more time to make this determination so that we can review Jeff Walsh's report?
Absolutely. Yeah, that's absolutely an option, for sure. You know, and that would look like we, we would extend the time and then assuming, I, I guess, that, that probably is the most efficient way to do it because if Jeff does discover and indicate that there are issues implicated that, that affect things that you can see, then at that point, we would need a public hearing anyway. So, I guess.
I mean, I think we're blindly making a decision until we have that.
But here's, here's the issue with that. If Jeff doesn't get me, we've already got a hearing scheduled the 12th. We've got holidays in there where we're closed and the newspapers have limited dates when I can get publications done. So does that mean we have to come back into a hearing and determine it a major and then publish, which means we don't have a hearing scheduled till the 12th, which means if I have to then publish, we're not, we're now into February. Unless you determine it major now, then I publish it and we have it on the 12th, no matter what Jeff says. But I'm just giving you guys the, the, the timeline of, I don't think we can, we, I think we still have to have a hearing after we get Jeff's report, which would have to be on the 12th because we've already scheduled that hearing.
A hearing or a meeting?
We've already scheduled the meeting on the 12th.
Chair, do we know when Jeff's, I mean, when, yeah, when Jeff's going to give us his review?
He was going to try and work on it this week. He had a bunch of stuff on his plate. I just, I don't know. And I'm not in tomorrow, so I, I can't get ahold of him until Monday.
I mean, could we let him know that we've got a hearing on the, a meeting on the 12th?
Oh, yeah, he'll have, he'll have it by the 12th. What I'm, what I'm saying is, if we don't determine right now that it's major and we wait till the 12th, and then if you guys decide it's a major, major change and I have to publish, that means we're not having a meeting till the end of January, first week of February because I need three weeks before the hearing because.
So, yep, that's all, yeah, that's all correct. If I may, Mr. Chairman, I think as a practical matter.
Hold on, please.
So if we, so if we, we would have to come back into a meeting for you guys to determine if it's a major, if you guys determine it's minor, then on the 12th, you know, that's fine. But if on the 12th, we come in with Bill and everybody else here and then you guys decide it's a major change, so now, as of the 13th, I could get, no, I can't because the cutoffs are Thursday. So I would have to wait till the following week to get something to the Grafton News, which is now the 19th, which means we can't have a meeting until the, so the 19th, 26th, February, the first week of February. And that's, and I'm just trying to lay that out. I mean, because now you're going from the middle of January to the middle of February. That, I'm just trying to give you the window.
So.
Of publish, of publicizing for a, a public hearing.
Okay, did you?
Sorry.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like we don't have any choice. I mean, and I, I mean, I'm curious why we even started this conversation this evening. We can't make a decision whether it's substantial or not because we need to hear from Jeff. So we're, we're kind of, we can't, we can't make a decision. We're waiting for Jeff's review. So if we have to find that out on the 12th and if we have to extend it to February, we have to extend it to February. I mean, we don't have any choice.
Unless you guys want to just say that it's major and publish it and have it on the 12th.
Well, I mean, I, I think to Peter's point, I, I think it does open up a whole can of worms if, you know, Jeff Walsh comes back and says, you know, this is insignificant.
Can we make it contingent on the path and Jeff Walsh's report?
No, I think that would be, well, with their consent, we can defer the decision. So we don't have to make a decision tonight.
Oh, that would be just deferring the decision?
Right, right.
A decision whether it's major, minus substantial or insubstantial.
Right. And that would give us, give Jeff time and allow us to review it. Mr. Yelman?
In looking at this project, drainage has been a major issue. And I'm not an engineer. I'm not a hydrologist. But I think that the neighborhood deserves the opportunity to hear this presentation, to develop the drainage for this 100-unit, 50 duplexes. This drainage has been an issue. And I respectfully think that, Mr. Chair, if we consider it to be substantial, which I deem it to be, anything relative to this project that is affecting drainage and going from a, the, the pipe size is changing, I think that the neighborhood deserves the opportunity to hear the presentation from Graves Engineering and from the developer's engineer. And I think that you, as chair, can contain the, the comments. This is what we're going to discuss. It's the evolution of the problem that the developer has, in my opinion, created on this project. And it has evolved to the point where they had to fix it, which it appears as though they've done that. So I, in my opinion, it's, it is a major change and the neighborhood does deserve a hearing to hear what is proposed for this 100-unit project that's going up on the hillside and back of them. And all of that, and I live in South Grafton. And what I've seen is, over the past number of months, is a constant indication of drainage problems. So I, as a member of this board, want to be assured that Jeff Walsh of Graves Engineering and the developer's engineers, Steve, is it?
Steve O'Connell.
O'Connell, that they come before this board and as a, as a major change and that the neighborhood gets an opportunity to listen to what is being discussed. And then we can vote on that presentation that's given us of that night. So I, I, I consider it, in my thinking, that this is not an insubstantial or unsubstantial change. And I, I consider it a major change that I want to see a full review of the engineering between the discussions of those two engineers to thoroughly explain to me and to the residents, the surrounding residents, who I, I think are entitled to a full explanation. And I don't think it's, it's, it's just an administrative call.
Well, so we're not saying by deferring this decision, we're, we can have that information presented before we make that determination whether it's substantial or insubstantial. But by, you know, voting tonight that it's a substantial change, we then are forced down this path of, you know, public hearings or hearing potentially more than one, that, you know, we come January 12th or whenever we review Jeff Walsh's report, we may be completely comfortable that it's an insubstantial change. So I'm, what I'm suggesting is with the developer's consent, to defer this decision until we have Jeff Walsh's report. And then we'll make that determination. So that we're not, you know, we're not forcing ourselves down this path that may or may not be necessary. I, I'm not, you know, and, and I concur with your comments on, you know, the, the major impact and the, you know, the, like I said at, at the beginning of this, you know, the drainage was the largest issue. And changes to that, you know, I, my default would be that it's substantial, but I don't want to jump to that conclusion without the information to support it.
No matter what, people can, there might be people out there listening right now.
There's only one person. I don't know.
But I mean, anybody can come to.
Or they're listening to it on the TV, yeah.
Right.
Absolutely.
They could come to the room.
But I just, I just wanted to give everybody that, you know, if we go to the 12th and then it's deemed major, the next earliest is going to be the first or second week in February. I just wanted that to be known with everybody. There's no other way around it because I have to have 14 days to publish a legal notice. I, my hands are tied on that. Like, that's the way it is.
So I, I mean, I think that's.
And I just want Chris and Munir to understand that, that, you know, i- if it's deemed major, that's fine. But then on the 12th, I can't publish anything. I can try and see if I can get something into the Grafton News on, on the 12th. I have to, because the Grafton News was just bought out again. I've got to find out what their cutoff time is and I will find out next week if I can get something published by that noon on Friday for, so that'd be the 12th. So if I could get something published for the 17th and then the 26th.
Even if it goes into February.
It's going to be February. So it's either going to be the first or second week of February. But I just wanted everybody to understand that. That's, that's my own reasoning.
And, and basically what the, the trade-off the developer's making here is, you know, consenting to additional time for us to review in the hopes that we deem it an insubstantial change and avoid.
Avoid having to go that extra month. I, absolutely. But I just wanted everybody to understand just my time.
You know, there's no.
There's no guarantee.
We're not deciding one way or the other tonight.
On the, on, if, if they, if they allow us to put off the vote, and we come back to 12th and we have Jeff's report whatever time beforehand, and it's acceptable, and people come and ask their questions and blah, blah, blah and all that stuff, is it possible to vote it, an unsubstantial vote that night and end it?
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes. The only way it would get continued is if we, if you guys deemed it a substantial change.
A substantial change.
And then it would carry on to the next meeting and we would have to publicize it.
And I would think if Jeff's report came in and it said it had to be a 36-inch pipe, I would imagine that part of the meeting would get canceled that night.
Probably, I don't know. But I, but I, like I said, I just wanted to give everybody the timeline on my end.
And we would have Jeff.
And let Munir and Chris understand that.
We would have Jeff available that night, I would hope.
Yep. I will send out an email. I'll actually send him out an email tonight, him and Dan.
If, if, if his report's ready.
Yeah.
Yeah, it should, it, he, he should.
No, I mean, that way he, he doesn't have to, either in person or on.
Right. Yeah. I'll, I'll send that email. Like I said, I'm not in tomorrow, but I will send that email tonight before I leave. Is that understand, under, is that okay with you and Chris and Munir? That made sense?
So, yeah, Mr. Chairman, and, and thank you very much Katrina for outlining the, the timeline. And I, I know it's tricky to squeeze all these hearings in. And in hearing the timeline, it sounds like this would get pushed pretty far down the road potentially. So, you know, given that we have the 12th available, and I'm hearing that there is some desire for the neighbors to be alerted and, and made aware of, of what's been going on and to say whatever concerns they might have about this, this narrow issue. And, you know, the chair can certainly limit the discussion. It may be more efficient to just go forward with the determination that it's substantial, have the hearing on the 12th, do the notice, we'll, we'll get Mr. Walsh's report in the interim. And, you know, it, assuming it validates the, the redesign, it should be a, a pretty limited quick hearing. But it would give everybody an opportunity to, to say their piece. Yes, there have been concerns about drainage. We, we absolutely, you know, make it our highest priority to ensure that the site remains stable and that, that drainage is appropriate. So, you know, if it helps for us to express that during a public hearing, then, then we can certainly do that. So I, I think it, it, it may seem counterint. So I think it may seem counterintuitive, but it may be the most efficient route to just go ahead and make that determination. Because if there's any indication that then, you know, there might be a question, and it might get determined on the 12th, then we're just pushed down, you know, even farther down the road. So I think ultimately, the regulations are clear, and obviously, the board is charged as a quasi-judicial entity to follow the law. You know, certainly, there are limitations on what can and can't be determined as substantial. And ultimately, I think we'll be okay. But certainly, there are other practical considerations that I've heard expressed, which are all very much valid. And I think it's probably worth just ripping the Band-Aid on this one to make Katrina's life easier as well, you know, to have that hearing.
Matali, did you have a comment earlier? Any other comments from the board?
I'm in agreement with the counsel for the developer. You know, I think it's, I think anything to do with drainage on this project of this consequence is a major change, and it's substantial, and a hearing should be held. And if the, if the parties in the neighborhood wants to attend, that I think it can be controlled, that this is what is being heard this evening, and it's what's being discussed between the engineers and the ZBA, then it goes forward, you know, at that point. And then we have heard, we have determined tonight that it's substantial. And then we will, on the 12th, between Jeff Walsh of Graves Engineering and the developers engineer, Steve-
O'Connell.
O'Connell, hopefully he's well.
Yeah, he's on tonight.
And then we can present to the neighborhood again what the proposed solution is to ensure that in the future that the engineering representing the town agrees that it meets their satisfaction and that it goes forward. But, so I'd like to see it determined as a substantial change. And I think the council's recommendation is a sound one. And that's my opinion. Is this registered letters or just letters that go out?
Just letters.
Just letters to three hundred feet?
Yep.
So that's a-
Going to need a bigger boat.
Well, that's also a short window of notice.
No.
Today's the fifteenth, two weeks.
Today's the fifteenth. No, it's, it's-
Not quite a month.
So I would, I would, I would send, I would send the legal notice to the Grafton News next week. It would get published the 29th and the 5th, and the meeting is the 12th. So I've got four weeks. And it would, it would go out. I would prob, more than likely, send the legal notice to the abutters after Christmas, only because to not get mixed in all the Christmas mail. But it'll be published in the Grafton News and online, so.
Probably put it in their tax bills.
Do that, too.
Can we, can the town advertise in the community advocate?
No.
No.
Well, we can. It's triple the cost of advertising in the Grafton News or, I mean, we just have always done the Grafton News.
Yeah.
Because at one point, we did look at the community advocate when we thought the Grafton News was going away.
Do we still use the telegram? No?
I did this time, because I missed the cutoff. Because of Thanksgiving, it was an error on my part. But now that the Grafton News is on its own, it's actually cheaper than when it was under the umbrella of the telegram. Don't ask me why.
Oh, really? I haven't bought a new one.
Yeah.
So then, what is before us tonight, Mr. Chair?
It's a determination of whether the, this notice of project change is a substantial or an insubstantial change.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just very briefly?
Yes.
I think the point was made earlier about limiting the scope of the hearing. And the regulations are clear that the hearing on the notice of project change only affects, or is only on the issues that are at issue in the change. And that is strictly the Main Street drainage infrastructure improvements. And it's the engineering surrounding that.
Right, and that's exactly what the legal notice will say.
Yep, right. And I think then the only other point is, I think it's the practical implications that are kind of drawing us in this direction of a substantial change determination. The regulations do spell out an analysis that the board is to undertake. So, you know, I think we're acquiescing to this idea of substantial change. But I just, if you're at all curious, I would double-check or just read the regulations regarding what constitutes substantial and insubstantial. Because it's actually spelled out, and it's not just something that is of concern. But I think we can fit the round peg into the square hole to make this, to make this work, given the implications.
Well, so that was my concern with making a decision without all the information. And I don't have that in front of me, but, I mean, if you're essentially, you know, conceding or requesting that it be determined a substantial change, I don't, I don't see any issue with that.
Right.
All right, any further comment from the board? Ms. Reed?
I mean, I feel like now that Mr. Agostino has stated this, let's move forward. Let's say it's substantial. Seems to make everybody happy. I think we're, you know, we're dwelling on the same thing over and over and over. Let's just agree, and let's set it up for the 12th. Let's do it. I think, I don't, unless somebody disagrees. But, and if we keep the discussion narrow, and if you can control that during the 12th, January 12th meeting, I think it makes sense if they want to, as he said, rip the Band-Aid off and move it forward.
All right, so at this time, I entertain a motion to deem the notice of project change for Fisherville Terrace to be a substantial change to the comprehensive permit.
So moved, second.
Motion made and seconded. Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Yeomans?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Biswas?
You never named her, did you ever?
He named her for every case, yeah.
Oh, he did? Okay, I'm sorry.
Matali?
Did we lose her?
I don't know.
I'm going to be two, three, four.
Yeah, the chairman votes yes. Motion's allowed, passed. So it's determined to be a substantial change.
Okay, so I'll get those legal notices out next, to the newspaper next week, Chris, and I'll get in the butters list and get it out to everybody, okay?
Great, thank you. We'll see everybody on the 12th.
Yeah, thank you. Have a nice holiday.
You too, thank you.
So Elmar Estates.
Yes.
Steve is going to stand for this one, too, if you guys want to ask him any questions. So Elmar Estates was-
There, is he?
Yeah, he's over under participants. If you click on the participants, so-
On the year screen, is that year screen?
No, that's the, here, I'll put mine on. But I think we lose the TV feed if I go on.
Oh.
Yeah, that's the thing. So anyway, Elmar, Steve is like giving us a pre-submission. Because this is going to be brought up at town meeting. But before he started to do the whole submission, he wanted to make sure the board was okay with everything. So he did submit the Asbills. I am going to be sending those over to Jeff Walsh next week. I do have the release from Conservation that he did file with the Registry of Deeds. I do have a letter from the DPW regarding that everything was fine with the water and with the syrup that was put in there. So he just wanted to kind of give the board a heads-up that it's coming and kind of get everything lined up to then submit. Because once he submits everything, we're under a fourteen-day window to make sure everything's there and ready to go. And then we have, if we deny that it's ready to go, we have forty-five days to give him the denial. And he doesn't want to have to go through the denial. He would rather have everything set up. So I will be giving it also to Eve, who is right now our consultant planning planner. We have hired a new town planner, right, Bob? When does Fiona start? Next week?
Monday.
She starts Monday. So we'll give it to Fiona also to take a look at and start the review. But I'm going to send it over to Jeff next week. So until we get, technically, until I get anything from Jeff, we're kind of got to wait. And Steve knows that. So we just wanted to give you guys a head up. Is that correct, Steve? Let me unmute you.
Wait a minute, let me jump in there if you don't mind.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, so this one here, like Katrina did state, is going to go to town meeting because the town's going to take over the road. But in the past, we actually gave all this responsibility for the closeout to the town planner, because there's a whole process that they have to go through. And it usually takes about a year to a year and a half from start to finish, from when they want to go in front of town meeting. I think we learned our lesson on this with High Point. Of course, High Point, it never finished. But that, who was driving us down that path? So I think what's going to happen is, we'll have a meeting with the town planner on Monday, which I'm sitting down with them at two o'clock on Monday. And I will bring this up to them. And if Katrina's back in town, I'll have her at that meeting, too. But there's a whole procedure that's going to be driven through the town planner for this closeout. The difference between this one and Craftsman Court is it's not going in front of town meeting. We're not taking over the roads. We did not need DPW. All we needed was Jeff Walsh to give kind of his blessing on the whole thing. But now, everything kind of changes.
Did I pretty much hit everything right, Steve?
Oh, yeah. I quickly, I just, in every other community I've done road acceptance is in. I've made the request, like I did to you, you know, to this board, requesting a determination and completeness. And that initiated the review process that Jeff Walsh is going to do. So that's why I submitted this. And then Katrina and I had a conversation, and she said, I could have just gone directly to Jeff. But, so, yeah, you're correct. But we'll follow the timelines. I'm very familiar with the regulations that the Planner Board has in place for this. I've been through lots and lots of road acceptances, just never in Grafton. So I don't think you'll have to educate me so much on the process. So just so you guys know that, you know, not fighting me on this issue. I just want to get the ball rolling. I think everyone's happy with the project, that there's nothing outstanding other than these, you know, administrative housekeeping steps that, you know, we're embarking on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Like I said, I'll send it over to Jeff. If he wants a PDF copy, I'll let you know, okay?
Yep, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have to get letters from Sauer and?
I do have one from Paul, and I believe that is Sauer. I've got to get one from Water.
And DPW.
Well, DPW, that's Paul.
It's, I know it's the same person, but it's still two different departments.
Yeah, so we'll get those.
Yeah. And I mean, once we get Jeff Walsh's that says everything's okay.
Right.
I mean, he's the one, he's the major one.
Right, and I know he was up there when, because I have all the reports from when they were pouring the topco and doing everything else. And I believe I do have a report from that. So it's just making sure all the trees that we, that were on the plans were there and everything else.
But that's Jeff Walsh.
That's Jeff, yeah.
Yeah, and Conservation, of course.
Right. And then the town planner has to walk it, too. So because-
Really?
Yeah, actually, yeah.
What are they doing on our job?
Well, they, we have them walk it because we don't. I mean, unless you guys want to walk it. But I know with High Point, Joe went up and walked it, I think with Bill and Jeff.
Oh, really?
When the very first one came in three years ago. So, I mean, if you guys want to walk it with her.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind.
Yeah, but, yeah, just so we know what to do. I think that's the whole reasoning, is none of us, none of you guys knew what to do, which is why we had Joe do it. So, yeah, we'll set it up so you guys can go with Fiona when she goes.
Yeah.
And I'm, I mean, I'm fine with them running the process.
Yeah, okay. I think you're done, Steve.
He ran away.
All right, so we have minutes?
Yep.
So, on the Board of Appeals, everybody have a happy holiday. Thank you.
Yes, you too, Bob.
Thanks, Bob. Happy holidays.
Thank you.
So we'll do the minutes, then we'll go into executive session, and we won't return to open session. So any, let's see, we have the September 22nd minutes and the October 20th minutes?
Correct.
Any comments or edits, anyone?
I say we accept them as submitted. Do you want to do them separately?
Yes, so we do the September 22nd ones first.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented for September 22nd, 2022.
So moved.
For second?
Yeah, Kay seconded it. Bill made the motion, Kay seconded it. So now, roll call.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Yeomans?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Biswas?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes. September 22nd minutes are approved.
I make a motion, we accept the minutes as presented for Thursday, October 20th, 2022.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Yeomans?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Biswas? Consider that yes, chairman votes yes.
Sorry, just couldn't unmute myself.
No, no problem. The October 20th, 2022 minutes are approved. So, so we're going to enter into executive session to discuss the negotiations and mediation with High Point related to their appeal to the Housing Appeals Committee of our decision denying their request for a certificate of completion. To discuss these matters in open session will compromise the town's position. It needs to be discussed in executive session. The chair so declares. So at this time, I entertain a motion to enter into executive session.
So moved?
Oh, actually, do we need to close the meeting? The, oh, meeting? Because we're not going to return to-
Yeah, so you say you're going to adjourn it in executive session.
All right, so we'll adjourn it in executive session.
Not to reconvene?
You know, we are not reconvening in open session later.
Yeah. So Bill made the motion, Kay seconded, roll call.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Yeomans?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Bizwas?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes. We'll enter into executive session.